At that time, she had had mentioned if no one was bidding, you know, that certainly, you know, they would help in any way that they could to transition because they want a smooth transition for our children. But we are, we are fortunate that we did have a group that is willing to take on all eight of our buildings. And also transition so that we are looking at the high school program for our elect students. And also that before and after care option eventually at Learning Express as well.
So just creative kids, do they have the manpower to staff all the buildings?
They feel comfortable that they will be able to. Obviously, that is a process for them. They have current staff working at their location. They will also be advertising and hiring for those positions as well. So, you know, they, they feel confident though with the situation and then looking at our numbers that they are going to be able to staff all eight buildings. Just one more thing, I did put it off topic, but I did put it at your table. A mural dedication that you're all welcome to attend on Friday, April 21st at 10 o'clock at Juniata Gap. That was a combination of our third graders and also the painting class at the high school. And our Art for Public Places created a mural for that building. So you're all welcome to attend that dedication.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the budget finance.
Thank you. You have the PowerPoint printed in front of you and we'll also have it on the screen as well. Just a quick overview next, at the next Cal, we'll go over some preliminary budget numbers for next year. We'll need the preliminary budget approved at the May 15th board meeting. We'll have another committee of the whole and discuss finance on June 5th. And then the final vote as of now will be on June 19th. And I say as of now because you'll see that in an upcoming slide. But when we gave our last presentations, Sue and I and several other people were on our way to PASBO. And we were participating in the, the budget presentation by the governor. And so we have some updates on what we found out at PASBO and, and what the governor's proposal is. So on the third slide is, it looks like a heavy agenda. But it's, it's a lot of pieces that are coming together for us to build next year's budget. Now, we're just trying to keep you informed and it actually does all kind of tie together as we go. So our, we're going to go over Governor Shapiro's budget proposal and some other state updates. Give you some updates from some information we found out at the PASBO conference. Which included some, an update to the Act One Index projections, the amusement tax. We need to, we will have an agenda item on it and Sue will touch with that. Are, some of you were on the board at the time for our Affordable Care Act. We have, it's the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, PAPACA, Compliance Plan. We need to update that and we have a proposal to discuss with you. I want to give you an update on our teacher retirements. With the collective bargaining agreement, the teachers would get a higher severance payout for their sick and personal days. If they turned in a letter prior to April 1st. So we had, we had quite a few retirements, so we'll update you on that. Our, our security expenditures, we had hit several other areas over the course of these Committee of the Whole meetings. And finance meetings, but we never really touched on security. So this will have a statewide comparison and, and a discussion on some potential positions. Our hospitalization rates for our open enrollment, we'll briefly go over that. I understand there was a concern with the JACTC liability insurance, we'll touch on that. And then we're going to end with some good news on a potential community eligibility provision, which helps provide free meals to students in eligible buildings and Sue will take care of that. So we'll get started. On the slide number four is Governor Shapiro's proposal. As you know, what the governor proposes and what becomes law are often different. But at this point, he had proposed a 7.7% increase in education funding. Our portion is only 4.6% increase, which makes us 384 out of 501. We're in the bottom quarter of, of the, the increase. But it's still, it's still an increase and we are happy, happy that he made that proposal. Another update is, and you probably all have, have heard about this and are aware of it, is the current funding formula for education was deemed unconstitutional by Judge Jubilier. And Cohen, or Cohen Jubilier. And the General Assembly will have to come up when, and PDE will have to come up with a new, a new way to fund education. But what we heard at PASBO is they are going to take their time and try to do it right. So I do have some refresher slides from our January Committee of the Whole that will go over what the basic ed funding formula is now. What we also heard was the Homestead-Farmstead funding is expected to be the same as last year. Last year, they had an increase for the first time in, I think, 10 years. And we were fearful last year that it was going to go back down. And, but they are not making that proposal this year, which is, we're thankful for that. There's also legislation proposed to change the budget deadline from June 30th to July 31st. And at first, when we heard it, most people were saying, that's, that's crazy, that's never going to go. But now we're hearing that it's gaining some traction. So we just want to put that on your radar. But that will affect us because that means tax bills won't go out in July. It would push everything back a month. We, our interest income would be affected among other things, but we will keep you posted on that. This is just kind of putting it on your radar. And that's my last piece. We'll keep you informed as the budget progresses.
I had a phone call with Lou Schmidt today about the fact that our percentage of increase isn't even the state average of 7.7. And he asked for the figures and I will be forwarding this to him tomorrow. Because they zeroed out the level up funding, which was aimed at the lowest, the hundred lowest, highest poverty schools in the state. They zeroed that out and they put it into the formula. Well, when, when this formula was created, it went from us getting a dollar for dollar to us getting about 60, 66% or two thirds of a dollar for every dollar that, that was given out on average. And if you look at this 77.7 versus 4.6, that's just about right. It's two thirds. So I had a pretty straightforward conversation with Lou Schmidt and he says, just give me the facts and I will, and, and we're going to dig into it. Because the whole point was, while he's, while Shapiro said he was going to do away with, do away with a level up funding. He was, he was going to use the formula. People don't understand that the formula itself. But when that was put in place, it directly impacted us in a negative way. And if you're, and for some of the board members, I think Ron was on the board at that point in time and Dave was not. But Ron's the only one who might have remembered it when we did the presentation to say that we should have gotten, we got 4, 1.4 at that point. It was that bit, that big first year I was here, we got 1.4 from the state. We should have gotten 2 million or more. Well, that's what's happening right now. And hopefully I'm going to get Lou on it because he's part of the Appropriations Committee. And, and hopefully he'll have some influence on how we can level this out.
What is the amount that we're getting? Do you have the dollar amount?
Of the projected?
Yes.
Around 2.1.
2.1 and?
For basic ed.
Right. So the Farmstead is staying the same even though there was an increase in gambling, which is where that money comes from. Down in that. So, and like you said, the representative is on the Appropriations Committee. And then Senator Ward, I'm sure could give us some help, couldn't she? I'm just.
Maybe. You were in the meeting with Senator Ward. She presented a, a large amount of, of possible legislation. We have to see how that all, how that even, how that comes through.
Just, just as long as the taxpayers know that we are not getting our full fund from the state. That, that's all, that's all we have to say. That's, that, you know, and, and I'm sure that our representatives will do as much as they can. Especially our state rep, I hope, will do as much. Like you said, he's, he's on the Appropriations Committee. That gives him a step up.
Well, he immediately talked about taking it to the Appropriations Committee, taking it, taking it to Education Committee, taking it to Department of PDE, Department of Education.
He's appropriate. If, if you were taking care of money and, and you had a, a, and then you're, you're on the Appropriations Committee, wouldn't you say, okay, let's do this for education. Let's do this for high speed rail, whatever you want to do. But you're there and you can give that money out. Why, why go to the Education Committee? You know, you're there.
Well, you, you. You know, as well as I do, you, you say something and that, that doesn't necessarily make it fact. And so by him going to the other sources, hopefully he could better defend our position because he's going to have, he's going to have their ear as to what's going on also.
He's on, we're not getting our fair share. He's on the Appropriations Committee. What else, what else can he say? What are they going to tell him at DE? I don't know.
So the next slide is just a, a little refresher. It's slide five. That of what goes in the, some of the main components that go into this formula. So when the, the state puts in, there's a fixed hold harmless base amount. And then any extra that the governor or the, the General Assembly put in is distributed according to this formula. And there's the student weighted average daily membership, the median household income index and the local effort capacity index among some other things. But those are the, those are the three main pieces. And when one, when the money goes in, if other districts are going up in an area and we're going down in an area, that means our part of the pie is going down. And that's the next slide. Number six, slide six, which was from our January Committee of the Whole Meeting that Sue had presented. Is you can see in the highlighted column that our portion, our allocation has been going down. And that's, that's a concern. And that's what Dr. Prietal was, I believe, discussing with, with our representative. So the next piece was another PASBO conference update that Sue's going to cover.
So the, the next few slides came from a presentation from the Independent Fiscal Office. So that is outside the Department of Education and it's basically the fiscal office for the state of Pennsylvania. They compile statistics and reports on that. So they focused a lot on job numbers and the workforce in Pennsylvania. And specifically for us as it related to education. So you can see from the fourth quarter of 2019, so pre-COVID, to the fourth quarter of 2022. Businesses themselves have seen a loss of jobs of about 42,000. Households are also reporting that there's about 92,000 people less in their households that are looking for jobs. And the effect that it's had on school districts is about 7,000 jobs lost. And it's not necessarily that we, people are eliminating jobs. It's that there are people not available to work in these positions. So on the next slide, it specifically speaks about the trends in education. So you can see 267.9,000 people working in 2016, 17. And then how the trend has come to the current year. So we're down to 265.3. So over that period of time, we've seen a loss in jobs within public education. However, if you look at the next line, there has not been a corresponding decrease in payroll. So that's going to have an impact on budgets across the state. Though even though we don't have as many employees, the payroll has increased period over period throughout the same timeframe. The next slide speaks about labor force participation rates. So I made the assumption, and it was an incorrect assumption, that we are, that people are moving out of the state in, in seeking better paying jobs or better employment opportunities. That is not the case. So this slide shows, the black line shows, and it's unadjusted for seasonal trends, that in July of 2019, almost 64% of the population in Pennsylvania was seeking and/or working. So there's a dramatic drop. You can see that in the middle of the slide due to the pandemic where many people just stayed home because they weren't able to work. Now, in January 2023, there's only 61.7% of the people in the state of Pennsylvania are actively looking for jobs or actively working. So it is people that are aging out of the workforce or people in generations that have just decided they're no longer going to work. The IFL reported that there's currently a negative birth rate in the state of Pennsylvania. So people are retiring at a rate that's faster than there are people moving into the workforce. And I chatted with Adam a little bit and he was going to kind of pop in and, and let us know what he's doing as the HR director to help us mitigate these circumstances and the things that he's doing to help us so that we don't experience some of the, the falls. If you want to chat a minute about.
Good evening. First thing in particular that I'm doing is having as many children as I can to reinforce that. For Rich has to deal with them all, but no, we're trying to get out there as much as we possibly can to job fairs, college fairs, to get that kind of direct contact with the teaching candidates who are going to be in our schools at some point in the, in the not so distant future. So fairs that we've attended here in the last month, pretty much Juniata College, Millersville University, the Pittsburgh Educational Resource Consortium puts a good one on. I was at the Student PSDA Conference. We had a table over there. Mount Alawishus and St. Francis do a joint, a joint effort as well. And UPJ had a fair as well. So some of these are educational specific. Some of them are labor and education and might depend on the traffic that you're going to get. We're also going to Penn State, IUP, and we, we are routinely going to the Jaffa Shrine now for, for some of those labor positions as well. So trying to get out there as much as we can so that worst case scenario, people know that Altoona has positions. I won't steal the thunder of the slide later on for the retirements, but we know already that we have large holes to fill. So we're trying to be proactive when we can at those fairs to get candidates applying today regardless of the certification. So that we have their information ahead of time, can review it and, and get, get in touch with them equally as easy as they can get in touch with us. I've spoken with over 94 kids already at those types of events. We, we have pipelines with colleges where we're bringing student teachers in. So we were talking about the timeline of their pre-student teaching, usually happening here in the second semester and then their student teaching beginning in the fall. Trying to open up some more relationships with like Juniata for a science program and things like that. So I'm meeting some new people, which is nice to know them, but also just again, kind of impressed upon people that we're trying to get them as early as we possibly can to give them a good experience and turn them over to our people that way. With the, some of the labor positions and trying to branch that out, we're paying for some clearances and some onboarding materials that used to be a barrier to bringing them on in employment. So when the labor force is all gung ho to get started and then they have to shell out in order to start receiving money, we try to eliminate that as a barrier as well. And that's been highly successful in terms of bringing people through the door. We had candidates that were interviewing and being offered, but now they're actually coming, coming on. So we're excited about that. And we're advertising. So the advertisements, we're, we're doing everything from newspaper to radio. We were getting a little bit creative last few days, talking about some different things we can do. But indeed in Glassdoor, we take advantage of every job network deal that we can do through the mirror and through Forever Media or Seven's, Seven Mountain Media and trying to find any other, any other possible avenue that we can to advertise the dish.
If I can, I want to commend Adam because Adam basically has been racking up the miles and also been making a lot of contacts because the key is we're trying to get inside and not just, not just wait for people to come to us, but Adam is very active and very driven in getting out to schools to make those contacts, to, to make sure he has the, the list of phone numbers of potential people to call. And they know him on a first name basis. Hey, this is Adam from Altoona. How you doing? You know, there, there's a, it's not, he's not making cold calls when he's talking to these universities and we're trying to recruit people. And then that's commendable. And thank you, Adam.
It's, it's a strategy I kind of learned from Mount Alawishus. I spent a quick time at Mount Alawishus and admissions. And, and they collected card information to make cold calls to students, but they didn't usually network very well when they're at the event. So I'm doing that. And, and like, like you just alluded to, I'll bring a shortlist over to the group. When we have interviews and things, these are the people that approached me. These are the people that are forwardly looking for, for jobs. And that's what is, is happening at these events and I'm commending them for doing it. But I'm also, I'm also getting their information so that we can call them whether they've applied or not. And, and in each case to make sure that, you know, from an HR perspective, once you know this opportunity was out there. So it's a little bit of an extra step, but that's, that's the goal. The goal is to get them in the door.
Adam, one little comment. One of my sons put my, or had me put my name into LinkedIn.
LinkedIn, yep.
And when I get notification, somebody's looking, I figure it's somebody sort of really desperate, you know, for a 76 year old guy. But one of, one of the things I noticed was there's a person out there that has a rather large following who re, who recruits teachers who want to enter industry. And I'm wondering if the reverse might be out there. You know, if there is somebody who's recruiting people in industry to enter education. And if not, it might be something we could add to our website.
Right.
You know, if you're out there working in industry and you think you'd like to work with children and talk about the advantages, you know, what steps the person would need to take.
We, we've definitely talked about that to a good degree. We have a lot of teachers who are certified, maybe not in that content area, but we do have those coming in from industry that are interested in, in doing this in a classroom setting and having those benefits. So Brad was giving me, we were working, getting a little bit about PDE's website and what the avenues are to do that. So I know a little bit more now than I did before and definitely something, we're, we're welcome to any ideas. So anything like that, we're, we'll keep an eye on and see what we can, you know, take advantage of it.
Yeah, a lot of universities are really expanding their programming to cater to those that are not at traditional educationally tracked employees that have industry experience to be able to fast track them within two years into a certificate program within their designated field. Especially in the sciences, languages, there's a number of different areas. And there's a lot of local universities. The one that we work with most would be Wilson or Wilks that we're referring to, to, and we've hired a number of, of, of teachers that are working in these internship programs to get certified. And they can work on an emergency certificate for a number of years, actually up to four years till they have to be certified.
Juniata College was an event for all labor and half of the 14 kids that I talked to are not certified teachers, but were interested in education. So I, we talked about them, that specifically with them there at that fair.
You know, I had, I asked this board a while ago about the people that aren't certified, but they, they're skilled in, in an area that we actually pay for their credits. And have them sign a contract with us to teach for so many years. And we pay for their, basically their education as they go through. Now, these aren't teachers that are already certified and getting their masters. This is someone that comes out of, out of a business that wants a job teaching that is certified, say like in chemistry. And let's, let's pay for that person's, your credits to teach and have them sign a term, a long term for five or six or seven years that they'll stick with the district.
They're, they're afforded the same opportunities. They're hired as a full-time teacher. They're just working on an emergency permit for the number of years that it takes them to do that. While they're employed, they are eligible for the 75% credit reimbursement like all of our teachers are for the first 24.
Right. So, but I'm saying how many credits they're going to need in a specific.
Normally, normally they're in on an internship certificate and it's a 60 credit. It's a 60 credit certificate. Say again.
Interns.
Internship. If they have a degree, say they have a degree in biology and I want to go to high school and teach biology, but I don't have any of the ed classes. That's approximately 60 credits worth of, worth of ed, ed materials that they would need to pick up. Wilson runs an internship. We also use Wilks.
Wilks, Pitt, UP. There's a number of.
The thing, the thing is that these people are going to get through a certificate. They're going to pay a lot of money for it. But we could defray their costs and have them stay here. You know, we're out looking for teachers.
Well, we have.
It's not going to get any better.
We have gone to 70, 75% rate. And also when we have an extremely difficult position, if you remember last year, we are paying for this, this, I want to say it's the deaf, the specialist that we, that was an aide for us who's going back to, what's the university? Going Loyola? St. Joe's, going back to St. Joe's and we, and we have arranged, and we set that up where it's so many years that they have to work for us or they have to pay, pay.
75% of their.
Paying for the whole thing.
And how long will it take for them to get their certificate? Oh, they have their masters. Oh, that was left out. Okay. They have their masters.
But the idea being is they have, under PDE rules, they have a maximum of four years to get their, their certification. Normally, the, the, the internship certifications are three years.
Is it three? Okay. And.
Okay. So somebody, I just want to be clear on this because somebody did ask me this question. So somebody can come in from the workforce and start teaching without like doing student teaching or anything.
Correct. So if they have industry standards, they, they can commit and they can work on an emergency permit. So there's two types of emergency permits. You can have each for two years. One, you have to be enrolled in a, in a, in a, in a preparatory program. The other one, you don't have to be enrolled in a preparatory program. Will you normally make it a requirement that they have to go directly into a preparatory program if they are not currently certified in something? So a lot of the times, like if they're, if they have zero teaching certification, that's going to take them probably two years to do. If they have a certificate, it depends on what they're trying to get certified in. Sometimes they can just practice into another certification area.
This, the person who asked me does not have a certificate and I, I just assumed they had to do some form of student teaching before.
This, what'll happen with the internship paper, their student, their student teaching is onsite as an intern.
They're supervised by one of our staff members. So part of their program is like, instead of having, they also have somebody from the university that comes in and works with them as well. We, we've hired a number of teach, quite a few teachers in that scenario.
Right. And we're also going to have a meeting here with St. Francis here shortly. Because they want to, they want to find some ways to beef up their supports and it just makes sense. They're right down the road. That we have a better working relationship with them for masters and also for, I don't know if they're, they're not involved in the, in the internship program, but they should, they should be investigating that. So we're, we're going to have that. That's going to be part of our discussions with them.
I'll forward you guys the website and it'll show you by content area, what all universities offer, the varying programs. Ones that we've gotten teachers from Point Park. Oh, with State University in the middle of the state, it goes a little bit further. Oh, I can't remember the name of it.
Not Shippensburg.
Not further, further. Yeah. Yes, yes. But there's a number of them. Wilson and Wilks are typically the ones that we refer to. Because A, they're the path of least resistance in terms of training. Plus we have affiliation agreements with both in terms of training. Wilson, a lot of our, our, their instruction can be done by our staff that work with them adjunct. So they're providing the instruction locally. The majority of them that you're able to do almost exclusively online. Some of them do require some in-person as well, but it, it is a very convenient pathway to get experts from the field that can come in and have content knowledge, especially in areas like biology. We have, this year we hired a biology, a chemistry and some others that came out of the industry force. One was working in the lab, one worked for Dairy, Gallagher's, doing different things. And they've been, they've been fantastic additions to the staff. So it's been great. We've had, we had two engineers that are now math teachers. So.
Person who asked me was an engineer. So that's why.
We're looking. I just had somebody reach out to me that's a nuclear chemist and they want to, do you have any science jobs? Absolutely. We probably can't pay what a nuclear chemist, the going rate is, but we encourage them to apply. So there's, some of them are looking for a lifestyle change. They don't want whatever that private rigor is, but they're looking for, you know, they have passion to go in and work with students. They have passion to be involved in other activities, you know, within the field. So we've been very fortunate in, in the experiences that we've had with teachers that have come to us in that situation.
Thank you, Adam. The next slide focuses on inflation, which has just, it, which has been very big in the news. And it was an unusual fact. And it was an unusual fact that right at the minute Pennsylvania is experiencing a higher inflation rate than the rest of the country. The IFO could not put their finger on what was actually causing that. But right at the minute, wow, in February, the inflation rate, which is measured in Philadelphia would have, but applies to the entire state of Pennsylvania. Was at six point nine percent compared to the overall United States was at six percent. This has a, a corresponding, um, effect on the projections for the Act One Index, which is on the next slide. So the Act One Index is based on the SAW, which is the statewide average weekly wage. And the ECI, which is basically the inflationary, which is the inflationary effect of labor costs. So on, in our presentation last month, we projected that the Act One Index was going to be four point three percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. They're now expecting the base Act One Index to be four point six percent. So that is expected to go up because Pennsylvania's inflation is currently so high. So any questions on the IFO report before I move into amusement tax? Act, Act One Index is a limit that is imposed by the state legislature. That limits the amount of tax that the school district can increase real estate taxes on an annual basis. So amusement tax, changing gears. Um, in nineteen ninety-seven, Pennsylvania's school code was amended to limit the amount of amusement tax. A school district could collect if they were currently in the process of collecting amusement tax, which Altoona was. So that amount was limited by the exact amount that was received for the fiscal year ending June nineteen ninety-seven. So the Altoona School District was at forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents. So that is all that we are annually allowed or permitted by law to collect for amusement tax. Um, after the Altoona curve opened in two thousand nine through two thousand fourteen. The district was unaware of that limit or did not properly impose that limit. So we over collected from the curve during that period of time. Uh, some on the board may remember that the excess was then donated to the public library. So, and as a result of that, the curve was granted an eight-year exemption from amusement tax. That period has since expired. So we need to look at adjusting our amusement tax collection rate. Um, the state indicates we are not permitted by law to collect more than the forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents. So we need to reduce the rate. So you will see on the April seventeenth board agenda. I am proposing that we reduce the amusement tax rate from the current two percent down to one point four or five percent. And the slide there shows you how I calculated that. So I took a total of what we expect the annual revenue in the school district to be from all venues. Will be just over three million dollars. Um, take what we're allowed to collect divided by that three point one million. That gives us one point four seven percent. Gave us a little bit of room for growth with the industry that's out there. So I'm proposing that we adjust that to one point four five percent. So you'll see that on the agenda next month and that's the background there. Does anybody have any questions related to amusement tax?
So the next piece, uh, as I said, we're, we're touching on a, a lot of different things tonight. This is back to the, the Affordable Care Act. And this ties in, uh, this particular proposal that we have on changing our compliance plan. Ties into the fact that there is a labor shortage. And I think you all are aware that, and we've been asked in various, um, board meetings. How many SEA positions are open? Have, do we have them all filled, which we have not? And we have not been at full capacity for SEAs for a couple of years. We, we believe that if we can offer them the, um, community partner healthcare. That might help attract them and keep them. And we could do that under the, under the auspices of the Affordable Care Act. So the, the SEAs who are considered full-time during a measurement period. We would use the full school year. And when we do a look back from last year, there were twenty, there were twenty-eight and it varies from year to year between twenty-five and thirty. And they would have a point four percent premium share, which is similar to what Ask Me has. And we would offer it to employee only. And we would begin their coverage in, um, September first for those who were determined to be at full-time status. So on the April agenda, we will, we will have our plan, um, for you to approve. If you approve it, um, to offer those, those twenty-five to thirty individuals, um, the coverage. And that also helps alleviate an issue we've had where we were trying to stay within. We had to offer healthcare to at least ninety-five percent of our full-time employees. And we had to watch hours very closely. Um, the SEAs now have van time and many of them are actually getting overtime. So this would, I, I think, take some stress off special ed and would provide these, these individuals. Who are working full-time hours and many of the ones of the twenty-five to thirty are long-time SEAs. Who are, are actually going a, above and beyond. So that's, that's one proposal you will see.
We, we do not recommend that we allow that to happen. Because the potential for, for under uncontrollable increases in our costs could be, could be extremely high. I mean, so we're not recommending the district make it that move, but to offer the individual healthcare to those. To those employees is going to be a boon. We had talked about doing this with our, our LPNs. In, inboarding the LPNs again, um, with an increase and also giving the individual healthcare. There's been some discussion about, about our security greeters who may fall into the same category. We, we, we have to over hire security greeters because they can only do thirty hours a week. The idea being if we moved our s- security greeters into this single healthcare option. And then make some, then we're also going to talk a little bit later about an adjustment in, 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 um, in salary. Hopefully we would be better, better able to attract them and likewise not need as many. Because right now we need five guys to do the work of four. Because of the hour limitation.
Are there any questions on this particular slide? So the, the next update, and again, back to our, to a labor, a labor issue. Um, I mean, lack of labor issue is, um. You may, you may recall that, um, we had been approached in the fall. Um, by the, by the teachers' union to offer a, a retirement incentive. And we are in year four of five of the previous retirement incentive. And, um, we are already having a hard time finding teachers and keeping teachers. And we didn't think it was in our, in the district's best interest to try to incentivize them to retire. And even without the incentive, today we got, we received our twentieth retirement letter. So we have twenty ex, um, experienced, um, long-time teachers. Who are planning to retire this year. And, um, it makes me sad. I'm happy for them, but it makes me sad because that's, that's a lot of experience going out the door. The, uh, the severance cost for those is actually, um, it's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I did more calculations after I, after I completed these slides. Because now they're bumped up per the CBA to ninety dollars a day. Whereas it used to be seventy-five. And we're still paying out ninety thousand dollars per year on the previous incentive. But trying to hire teachers now, knowing here in April first. Will give us an advantage to try to have those positions filled. This August is the fourth and neck, and the August of twenty-four will be the fifth year of the, the last year. Sorry, the next hard, hard to fill positions are security positions. And in light of last week's, um, issue. We are proposing that we will discuss at a later date, and this has come up before from parents, um, of having greeters in all buildings. Um, we're proposing that we discuss adding greeter positions at all elementaries and at the preschool. And increase their, their hourly rate to fifteen dollars an hour. That's, that's a discussion for, for later, but if that is approved, we'll go ahead and include that in the budget. Which will cost approximately four hundred thousand dollars to add those positions. Have them working full days, five days a week and offer them again the same. Preferred healthcare network, the community partner network for single only. And then you previously had already approved hiring two additional psychologist positions, which will help mitigate. Some of our special ed issues.
Just one correction. One of the, one of the psychologist positions is already in the budget. There will be one new position for next fall.
Okay, thank you. The cost for, I based it on spouse, um, healthcare rates. Plus their salary and benefits will cost approximately two hundred and thirty thousand and that, those will be included in the budget.
We, we already have, we already have secure vestibules in all of our buildings. Penn Lincoln has its secure vestibule. That's timing. Cause if you, if you're buzzed into the first door, there's so many seconds before the, the lock re-engages on the, on both doors. That's an adjustment we need to make with that way.
Yes. Each officer would be on at every building, elementary at, at Lex. Cause it would serve a legitimate purpose to have an unarmed greeter at those locations if they would have to respond to an incident. So that, that would be the Act Two Thirty-Five certification for the Pennsylvania weapon act. So we, we currently pay for all the training now to entice people because, uh, that's another benefit for us. To have an armed officer in the building.
Can you turn your mic up? Can you turn your mic on, Dave?
Cost of business is going up and we need the greeters, you know, at, at the elementaries. And I still think there may be physical plant work to be done at some of the buildings.
There, there, there are some things we're looking at and there might be some things that need to be tweaked. But for the most part, we should be in reasonably good stead. But there will be issues. I, I can guarantee you, there are things we've been talking about. That, that, that we like to do in the elementaries, which would improve security.
But that's, that's, that's the main thing, you know, to get that and have it up and running for next year. And so, uh, but I'm just, I, the physical plant, as long as people know it's going to cost money. And we're not, you know, someone's going to have to pay for it. And so there's no question we're going to have to have a tax increase, whether it's the max that we're, that we're allowed or a percentage. There's no question there's going to be a tax increase. We have to up our, our wages on every non-professional in this district. So I'm just, I'm just, uh, saying Billy, that I agree a hundred percent. And if you can get the guys, if you can get people, that's the whole thing. If you can get people.
That, that's my question. Are there the people out there?
Well, I, I think if, if the board goes along with raising the hourly rate twelve oh five right now to fifteen. It's a step in the right direction.
And plus do the individual, uh.
The, the plan would be to raise the base rate to, to fourteen. And then if they get the Act Two Thirty-Five would be fifteen. Cause that's, that's a pretty big hefty step when you throw that last ball around.
We have to do, has to be done. After, after last week, it has to be done.
Is there, is there, are there any fees associated with getting to that level that could be an impediment to them?
We pay their, we pay their, we pay their Act Two Thirty-Five fees.
All right.
So, so to answer your question, Dr. Great, I alluded to the current greeters we have now employed with the district. There was only one greeter that prior had the Two Thirty-Five previously. So we've paid for all their certifications and then they also have to go for the NASSA rule. That's a state requirement. So we pay for all those fees and education to try to entice people to come.
And I know year after year, Phi Delta Kappa did a survey of the, uh, public's perception of public education. And also their expectations and year after year, the number one expectation of parents. Was that they wanted their child to be safe in school. So when they send their child out in the morning to go to school, they have a expectation of us to keep their child safe. We also have the responsibility of, to staff to keep them safe. So I, I think this is of great importance in light of everything going on in this country. And last week was a wake-up call to us. It can't happen here. It can't happen anywhere. And, uh, we have to do everything possible to keep kids and staff safe in school.
So.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, Bill, real quick, um, so our greeters now, did I hear you correct saying twelve dollars an hour? So twelve oh five, so they're the frontline defenders. When, when someone comes into school, heaven forbid, and at a sporting event, they're the ones that are asked to go forward. And diffuse the situation for twelve dollars an hour. I'm all for a bump. A big bump. Thank you.
So in keeping with our comparisons, our statewide comparisons for various departments. The next slide, slide seventeen has, shows where we rank compared to other districts in the state. And it's interesting, you'll notice that it's of four hundred and thirty-five instead of four hundred and ninety-nine. Because there are districts who either don't have any security expenditures or they are not more than likely reporting them correctly. The, the state has specific account numbers that we are supposed to follow. And other, there are districts who are not following that appropriately. But when you compare us, when we're thirty-second in the state in enrollment, but our security expenditures are fiftieth in the state. And when you look at security cost per pupil, we drop down to a hundred and seventy-three out of four thirty-five. So we are not, we have a, a good police force. But it is not in comparison with our size and compared to other districts expenditures. Of other districts that have similar enrollment and similar expenditures. Are there any questions about security before I move on to, um, our healthcare rates?
You know, I'd just like to say with the incident that happened on Wednesday or, or Force Billy, you know, your guys are commended. Uh, Sergeant Plummer was on TV and with Dr. P and, uh, everybody worked together real well. It's just, it's just hope nothing like this happens again.
So for, um, on the April seventeenth agenda, you'll have a, an item for approval for our healthcare rates for this year. Which did not change from last year with the exception of the high one hundred percent, um, high mark plan. Which was actually very expensive. We only have fourteen retirees and employees who are on that plan, but it's very costly. So that is the only, um, only increase in rates. And we, we only took a fraction of the actual cost to, for the increase. It actually could have, or should have increased by, it was a hundred percent, wasn't it?
Two hundred percent.
Two hundred percent. So we, it, we're slowly ramping it up. But that's, that will be on, um, this month's agenda for your approval. All the rest of those. All the rest of those rates have stayed the same. The next piece is on the liability insurance coverage. CTC has been on our liability coverage ever since I've been here, and we invoice them for their portion of it. But the Pennsylvania Torts Act limits potential claims for public entities. With the exception, there are several exceptions, but one of them is for vehicle claims. And our exposure to a CTC claim would not be limited. And remember, we're, we're the ones, it's our policy, it's our coverage. So, this third-party contractor that's operating this tractor-trailer training at the CTC. We asked them to provide five million dollar umbrella coverage, which they did not, they did not comply, they've only provided one million. We actually ask renters who are using our facility to provide three million, which most of those do. But this, this contractor did not, did not go above a million. Any claims arising from this tractor-trailer training program, or any G, GACTC program, reduces the amount of our umbrella coverage. So, we have an overarching umbrella policy that would cap us. And, and I'm not throwing out a number for a reason, but we have this cap, and any claim that goes against it is going to hit that cap. And it could, the CTC tractor-trailer training program could easily hit that cap, and then we lose, we wouldn't have any other umbrella coverage if we had any sort of claims. Also, if they had a claim, it would also increase our rates for our vehicle coverage, because it's our policy. So, my recommendation had been for, at least for this first year of this, of this program, that we reduce our risk as much as possible by asking them to go out on their own, and we gave them plenty of time for them to obtain their own coverage for their liability. And I, I will take responsibility for making that recommendation. My, I feel like my responsibility is to Altoona Area School District and to you as the board in trying to minimize risk. We've had these risk liability discussions before, and I, I take responsibility for making that recommendation.
And this was brought up at, at the meeting the other day. You know, if we ask for five million, why doesn't the VOTAC ask for five million? You know, why, why, you know, why didn't they ask for, for five million?
It's our policy, it's, it's our insurance.
We're, we're eighty for seventy percent of the VOTAC, hate to say it, but, you know, it's our responsibility over there, too, that the VOTAC should have a five dollar, five million dollar umbrella also. And, and how many kids are taking this program?
Specifically, the CDL is an adult.
It's an adult program, okay. So, I'm just. I don't know if it's worth it for, for us, there was a technology center to, to have a big burden like that, who knows what's gonna happen? You know, five millions is a heck of a lot better than a million.
Is there, there is a high demand for truck drivers, and I think that's the reason that, that Eric Palmer and the CTC wants to pursue the program. She has all the facts regarding the umbrella and the impact of the umbrella. The, the reality is, I'm not sure whether they're gonna have, wh- whether the, the tractor-trailer training program feels that they, they need that kind of coverage or not. I, I don't have that kind of inside information. All I know is our insurer stated, in order for us to, to accept this kind of a liability, because it's going to impact all of our insurance liability base. Then we, we want to go with that, that recommendation, because.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pay for insurance over there anyway, but not, but not as much as we would if something happens, you know, but. I can't believe that they wouldn't go after a, a larger umbrella. I questioned, I didn't, I didn't question, I didn't realize that when we had that meeting.
So, this is not so much about costs, but it limits our coverage.
Correct, correct.
We have like a stop, we have so much insurance, like what, when we have.
When we had the cyber, we have the cyber insurance, it was a million-dollar policy, which meant that every, you know, we paid the first twenty-five thousand, but after that, every penny was covered up to a million. Now, how we handle that? The only one, we only spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was great. But the idea is, if we'd had a bigger exposure. It would have been coming out of our pockets, well, it's the same situation here, we have an umbrella cap that, that will cover us to a certain extent. If, if there is a, a major incident where there's a problem, that would eat up our cap, and then all of a sudden, if we have any kind of issue, like a roof or etc., our cap's gone.
Well, and another, another example is the library, when the library had that, the flooding and all the damage there. But that's our building, that's, the library can't go out, that's our building, but our rates went up and, and are going to go up because of that claim, even though there, it was, they're trying to go after. You know, our company is trying to go after the contractor's company, but at this point, until that's settled, which could take years, our rates, our rates are going up. So, that's, that's part of the history of, we know it's going to happen. We can't, we can't get away from the library building, but the CTC and their programs are out of our control, beyond our control.
You know, I must say, the library, that incident that happened over there, that wasn't our fault. I, I don't understand why our rates would go up for someone else's.
Because until, until it's resolved, that claim is on our history.
It, it's because the no-fault laws in the state of Pennsylvania are designed so that things are paid for, you can get things back up and running quickly. But then you have to go through the legal process to ensure that the proper insurance company pays the bill.
Okay, the, the last topic for this evening, as Camilla stated earlier, is, we're gonna end on a positive note. So, we've worked through the numbers, so the community eligibility provision is a program administered by the USDA that would basically allow for all students within the Altoona Area School District, if we apply for it, to get free meals regardless of economic status. So, the eligibility is based on what they call direct certification. So, any students that currently receive temporary assistance for needy families, supplemental nutrition assistance programs, foster students, homeless students, they all are what they call directly certified, so they receive free meals now. So, our direct certification rate, the minimum rate to qualify for the community eligibility provision is forty percent. You don't break even until you hit sixty percent. So, we updated our numbers on April first, and the district is currently at sixty-seven percent. So, I'm going to put a motion on the agenda in April that asks the districts, the board's permission to apply for this program. A couple of things that you need to know, if you go to the next slide, please, Nick, that you need to know about this is currently our free and reduced lunch numbers, our, our free and reduced numbers include those students and families that apply on an income basis. So, we use those numbers to distribute our Title I monies to our buildings, and also to qualify for the E-rate reimbursement programs that we do for a lot of our technology things. I think if you remember, we just approved the bid to add new wireless systems within our elementary buildings. That funding and the distribution of that is based on E-rate and these free reduced lunch numbers. They changed the regulations in two thousand and fifteen that now allow for district-wide funding. So, based on the research I've done, I don't think it's gonna have any impact on either our E-rate grant receipts or our Title I allocations. So, it looks like it would kind of go as it is. Now, Haley's going to PAFPC within the next two weeks, she's gonna get some more information. Just to make sure that the research I've done is accurate, it's always good to have a second set of eyes on everything. So, she's gonna get that. The community eligibility election is valid for a four-year cycle. So, if we apply for it now, we would receive that sixty-seven percent rate throughout the four-year cycle. We could reapply it for any reason our rate increased, but it will not decrease at that point in time. USDA currently uses a one-point-six multiplier on the allocation or the money that we get. They do have the legal ability to reduce that multiplier to one-point-three. If they did that, we would not be at a break-even any longer, we would be losing money in the program. They do not anticipate reducing that rate, and it has been at the one-point-six rate probably for the last six or seven years, since the inception of the program.
If they were to reduce that, the board could consider opting out.
Yeah, yes, and you can, I think that says it in the one above that, you can opt out at any time. So, you can opt in, and, and it's good for four years, but if at any time you see it's being detrimental to the district, you can opt out and go back to the reporting system that we're currently using.
So, this basically be saying that all but one of our schools will be considered high poverty.
Yes, and that one school is, it's just on the margin, I haven't looked at it specifically since we did the April first refresh, but I'm guessing it pushed it over the limit.
What, what it does mean is our, I'm sorry, are, all of our kids will get free, free lunches.
Yeah, but this might open a opportunity, too. And perhaps Adam could research this, because at one time, teachers would receive student loan forgiveness for teaching in high-poverty schools, and that might be quite a recruiting tool, if that's offered to, to our district.
So, the next slide just shows you that currently, with the calculations I've run, as I said, every student in the district would receive, and every building would receive free meals, both breakfast and lunch, throughout the next four-year cycle. The current numbers, and it's kind of a, it's a shell game right at the minute, because the reimbursement rates are inflated currently because of pandemic. We expect them to go back to two thousand and eighteen rates, which is what I use for this calculation. We'd make about forty-two thousand dollars more than we currently do. You'll remember, our program isn't a loss, but we'd make forty-two thousand dollars more. Students would still be allowed to buy extra meals, bottles of water, a bag of compliant chips, extra snacks, those kind of things. We would still offer that, so kids could get those things. One of the other concerns we need to keep in mind is if we discontinue it. So, families are gonna get used to free meals, if all of a sudden we back, we opt out and discontinue that program, it may be a hardship to some of our families, so that's one of the other things I'd like to put in your head that we need to consider. But overall, I think it's more than positive for our kids, that it's something that we should offer. And I'm recommending approval that, when I put it on the April agenda, to allow for this.
But even if we opted out, like, most of those families would still then be able to just fill out the application and qualify as well, right? So, it really wouldn't.
Right, so it's that, it's that thirty percent of families that would now get free meals that currently don't. And the poverty rate is pretty, it's pretty up there. I mean, I mean, the, the limits are, are fairly low, I mean, a, a family of four that makes forty thousand dollars still has to pay for the meals, so. That's a hardship, in my opinion, so I think this is a good thing.
Well, and just, I actually have the April numbers in my folder, so that's why I was digging through, we are up to seventy percent overall for our district as of April one, and that does put all of our buildings within the range.
I think they're reduced out.
I'm sorry.
The reduced doesn't qualify, it's just the direct cert numbers, so I calculate we're at sixty-seven, so we're somewhere between sixty-seven and.
Yeah, we're very close, but it does, it does push us over with all of our buildings over that percentage as well.
And they were getting free lunches be- because of the pandemic before, so families already did kind of make adjustments in previous, well, I guess this year, because for the past two years, right, they got free lunch?
Yes, and this was the first year where people that didn't qualify, that they had to pay again. This would also eliminate the need for applications, so those applications that we mail out every year, families would not have to fill out those applications any longer.
So, just to summarize this smorgasbord of, of topics that we've covered tonight. The Governor Shapiro's education budget did include a four-point-six percent increase, which increases are always good, even though it's not as high as it should be. The amusement tax reduction rate will be on the April seventeenth agenda, so will the potential Affordable Care Act changes to offer, which would offer healthcare to SEAs. Twenty experienced teacher retirements will pose hiring challenges, but you heard Adam describe some of our efforts, and some of you had some other great ideas that, that we will pursue. We have the potential to add security greeters for all elementary buildings and the preschool. We'll also have the twenty-three, twenty-four hospitalization rates that are unchanged, except for that high plan will be on for your approval. The GAC tractor-trailer training program exposes us to a greater risk that I don't think is necessary, and that's why I recommended they obtain their own coverage, at least for a year, and we could look at it next year and put them back on if you, if you so choose, and see how that program goes. And then the community eligibility program would provide free meals for most of the students in the district. And does anybody have any questions? And I have, Nick, when he went to Pete and C, I had him grabbing, grabbing some, and when he got some, and when I went, I slashed.
The only, the only other item that was not included in the budget presentation, and we have already discussed it in executive sessions, consideration of how we're handling our LPNs with the LPN shortage. And healthcare would be similar, and other options that we're, we're entertaining, we're gonna, we're gonna need to bring that to the board for approval, if the board feels that that's the way to go.
Correct, and I, I apologize for that, I had it on my worksheet, and the, the cost, it's, it's not an additional cost, not a large additional cost, because we're already paying ESS, it's, it will be somewhat of an additional cost, but I had meetings all day and I didn't get it, I didn't get it, all the facts nailed down to present it.
Okay, that's all the items on the agenda, adjourn this meeting and move to an executive session after a brief recess.